All right, I'm gonna call the Select Board meeting to order here for town in Groton, October the 5th, 2022. Uh, thanks everybody for coming out. Uh, it was a really busy and great weekend in Groton, and I really appreciate, um, all of our visitors that we had in town, and we'll probably have for the next couple of weeks in and out of town, so, thank you very much. All right, uh, I'm gonna kick off our agenda. Um, we will, um, let's start by reviewing and approving the minutes of our informational meeting from September 1st, 2022 in reference to, um, our, um, communal building health access, safety, and stormwater improvement project.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 1st, 2022.
All right, I will second that. Any discussion? We've had these for a while, so it's good to go. All right, so all those in favor signify, uh, approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved for September 1st. All right, uh, meeting minutes for September 14th, I'll move to approve the minutes for September 14th. You wanna second that here?
I will second that, yeah. Just waiting for somebody else.
All right, any discussion on the minutes from September 14th? Okay, I think I'm good looking. Um, all those in favor of approving the minutes for September 14th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes passed. Okay, uh, any adjustments to the agenda?
Agenda looks good to me.
All right, kinda full, let's crack right through it. All right, um, our first agenda item, following up, uh, with, uh, Ms. Rachel Smith on the plowing request. So, uh, I think we've, we've looked at this, um, I know that, uh, Aaron, I believe you drove out, did you drive out there?
Tristan.
Tristan drove out there, I knew he had, but, um, so I think, uh, based on the correspondence I got with Tristan and we got with the road commissioner, um, I think we've got some concerns with, with taking on the plowing of the road as a town, specifically because it's a Class 4 road and, um, as it would be a precedence that we would set for the town, um, that then we would, we would have a lot more requests, um, that go along with that.
He actually said it was not a Class 4 road up to the point where I needed to be plowed.
Okay, okay.
He said it was, it was definitely plowable, but, um, the only thing he was concerned with was that little hump coming up.
Yep, um, and so, you know, I think, as part of it, you know, I think with our Class 4 roads especially, um, if we start plowing Class 4 roads, we're gonna get additional requests from, you know, other residents that are on Class 4 roads, that's one of my concerns.
Completely understandable, but it's not a Class 4 road until past my house. And that's all camps up there, nobody goes up there, it's just me and I need emergency vehicles to be able to get to my house.
I understand that. Um, I think, you know, what, based on what, um, we reviewed, I think I've got it here with maps and everything is, you know, technically the road is considered, it's, it's listed as a Class 4 road.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
If I may speak. The town named that road, Grimes Acres Road. It didn't say private or whatever, that's a town road.
I understand, as are all of the Class 4 roads in town that are named, are also Class 4 roads. Part of the reason we have these, these stipulations especially is because of, you know, how the roads are classified based on their travel, it's all stuff that's done, um, with the, the road commissioner and I think with the highway department.
I can understand that if it was, if, you know, if you classify one Class 4 road, then you're gonna have to do a mull, I get that. But my road, he said, is not Class 4, by no means, it's just that one little hump he was worried about going up through.
Who was that, Rachel, was it?
Tristan.
Tristan.
And he said he was gonna talk to Harold, um, and Harold's been up there multiple times, so he knows it's just like one little mole that you have to go up, but there's no way a town truck's gonna get stuck up there. If I can make it with an SUV, you're gonna make it with a plow truck. I just, I just need, I can't afford to have somebody come up and keep plowing my driveway, I just can't do it. And, given the fact that, um, we, we live there year round, and I never asked the town for anything, all I'm asking is just, just one swipe up, one swipe down, that's it. Throw some sand down, throw some salt so I can get ambulances up there, fire department, and that, that's all I'm asking for.
And I understand that, with, with that, and I empathize with your situation for sure, I, I, I think me more than anybody can understand that. Um, but it would be similar to me with, with my, my wife's health issues that she's had for a number of years and me asking the town to plow my driveway. Um, it's very similar in that aspect, that we're, we, we have resources that we can provide, but at the same time, um, they have a cost, and we have to keep, keep into consideration the cost of those things, we have to keep into consideration, um, you know, what that means for other roads, in addition.
If you came to my house, it would be two minutes tops to go up there, turn around, and go down, that's it.
I understand that.
And Wade knows this, he's seen that, he was there in emergency when my husband had to be brought in down in the back with a pickup truck. You know, it's those situations I can't have, especially now that he's had this massive stroke, he's debilitated, left whole side. I can't go out there and snow blow my driveway, I can't hire people to plow me out, I just need one pass up, one pass down, that is it.
I don't, being the Class 4 road, Rachel, I just don't.
And he even just decided it's not Class 4. I maintain it so well that...
The, the determination for Class 4 roads is not based on looking at the road and the condition of the roadway, it's an established, um, it's established both by the town and by the state for what that roadway is considered and classified. We have Class 4 roads that are maintained by other private citizens that have the road up to a standard that's beyond what would necessarily be, but it's their responsibility to maintain those roadways. It's, it's separate from our, um, you know, what we classify as the roadway.
I understand, I do, but paying over $1,500 a year for, for property taxes, but I can't even just get like two minutes of help? So I have emergency access in and out?
I would say also, Rachel, that, you know, I, I had spoke to Harold with it about the issue, and he had said, obviously if anything happened, and Wade can verify this, we can request the road crew to come up and plow it out so that we can get in there with an emerg, for an emergency vehicle.
How would I know when this emergency is gonna happen, is what I'm getting at?
Yeah, we don't know either, and we hope that there isn't one.
And, and Greens Road, I mean, they're plowing that as a town road, nobody lives up there, I live here.
Yeah.
And there's more turnaround access point in my driveway than there is up on Greens Road. So I mean, it's just those, those little factors, it's a dead end road.
Yeah.
Just a bunch of camps, I live here, and my disabled husband, you know, I, I just, I just need help, guys, just talk to Harold again, one pass up, one pass down, that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
I can't be stuck in the same situation with emergency vehicles stuck in my ditch in the middle of the night, and also have a last name, 2:00 in the morning, they're all stuck in the ditch because they couldn't make the driveway.
I, I understand, I mean, I, I do, I truly do understand your situation.
But don't classify it, I mean, if you were to see it firsthand, you would know it's not a Class 4. Past my house, sure, that's all, uh, you know, four wheelers and stuff go up there, and there's no houses, but it's, it's half a mile, not even, quarter of a mile up and down.
Yeah, again, I definitely understand that, I understand, again, I understand the situation, it's, it's, I do understand too that it's not an ideal situation and, and, but...
No, it's terrifying.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, there, as with anything, there are limitations for what we can do, and I understand that it seems something simple, but, um, we do that for, we do that for this road, and then, you know, we get requests from everybody else that has a Class 4, and we have to then, then we have to reevaluate things like taxes, because right now, anybody that has an address on a tax, on a Class 4 road, those taxes are lower because it's on a Class 4 road, because those roads aren't maintained the same level as the rest of the town roads. So there's, there's, it's, it's not just as simple as a truck going up and a truck coming back down.
Now, why is Green Road being plowed?
I, the only thing I can think is it's because of the classification of the road, and if it's a Class 3 or a Class 2 road...
It's a Class 4, nobody lives up there, and that road is worse than my driveway.
I mean, Harold would know.
Harold wouldn't, yeah, I'd know.
That road is worse than my driveway.
Yeah, that is Class 3, and then it's...
You got two camps up there.
On Green Road.
That's it.
Tristan said that my driveway is probably classified between 2 and 3, not a 4.
Again, it's not up to Tristan to make that determination, that's, that's...
But it's Harold, yes.
Well, Harold has a piece in it too, but it's, it is a long process to get those roads changed from, from, you know, in, from what they're registered as, that's where it comes from.
So basically, we're gonna be abandoned up there because I can't get in or out, right? Even though I'm paying all these property taxes and I, I, I understand what you're saying with Class 4, but at the same time, if I'm not considered a Class 4 road until past my house, what is the issue there?
If Tristan told you that you live on a Class 3 road, he was wrong.
My road is not a Class 4.
Okay.
Past my house, yes.
Harold says...
Due to my house?
Yes, I, yeah, yeah, so Harold, the road commissioner says it's a Class 4 road.
I mean, what he needs to reassess.
Okay.
And my driveway, seriously, from that wall to me, turn around, right behind me, turn around, go back down, done.
I can follow up with the, with the road commissioner, and I can talk to him, but, you know, I think where I stand right now is that, you know, that doesn't fall within the purview of the road, road crew to do, to plow.
Still, you know, doesn't make any sense that the Green Road be plowed.
And, or no use, I, I can...
Cause they, they turn around, right at the mailboxes, backed up her driveway, and out.
Okay.
That's what they do, but Green Road, I mean, it's a dead road.
And all they have to do is turn around in my upper parking lot, and it's bigger than the one up on Greens Road.
Okay, yes, sir.
All right, just listening, what would be involved with, um, recategorizing this piece of the road as a, as a Class 3 road?
It has to be, it has to be communicated to with, um, it starts with the road commissioner, but it has to go through, I think it goes through the state.
Yeah.
And the state has to reclassify the road. Um, whether it's being upgraded or downgraded, that process has to go through the state.
I used to have it graded by Brett, and, you know, he'd come out, clean out my ditches so that we, all that runoff didn't wash out for Hill Road, and then that all stopped.
Okay, again, I can follow up the road commissioner and, you know, if, if it's helpful, I can have him come talk to you about the situation.
Yeah, that would be great, because, I mean, I, I've talked to him about it before, he's come up, he, he saw my road washed out, put a new culver in, but ever since then, that was the end of it.
Rachel, it doesn't matter that, I, Zach and I are sympathetic to, to your situation, and this isn't a position that we enjoy being in, telling you no.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm just stating my case.
I know, and I just want you to know that your plea isn't falling on deaf ears, we're just in a position where we need to draw the line somewhere on where the highway budget is spent. And the highway budget, the taxes are raised...
Okay, so just have them stop going up and turning around on Green Road and having turn around in my driveway because it's actually less mileage for them to turn around in my driveway.
Yeah, I'm not...
Or my road, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, me and Zach don't know what the plow route is, we don't know what the guys, what they're out, what...
You got Green Roads.
It's a couple miles up where they turn around and it's...
Plowing for nothing and shaming.
Yeah, I, they've gotta have a reason, I'm sure they're not just, but, I don't know what it is, yeah.
So take, you know, if you're concerned about the money, the money you're saving from not doing Green Road, you can plow to other places.
Yeah.
But, you know... But, yeah, and again, I, I, that's, those are questions that I don't have the answers to, that's the road commissioner, and I can get him to communicate, um, and follow up with you guys too, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything, is there anything that the town, is there anything, any funds or anything in the town that could, uh, help somebody out in a case like this? I mean, she's in a, but there's, she's in one of those situations, probably there's others in the town too, that, that have this unique situation where one of the spouses is disabled and they need help, and you guys, your hands are tied, uh, so I'm kinda thinking of, is there anything in the town? I, I don't ever remember anything that the town had for...
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, maybe he has or something, among those, yeah.
I would definitely suggest, I mean, and I think my, my recommendation especially knowing some of the, the entities that you probably work with on a regular basis, is to contact, um, you know, contact some, you know, contact a social worker, there's, there's multiple, I think avenues, there's different agencies that can get involved that may be able to help provide funding or, or have funds available that they are, you know, doing Good Samaritan plow work, you know, for, for folks. Um, you know, again, I completely empathize with your situation, my wife is disabled as well, and, you know, it's always a concern in, in my mind, what's gonna happen.
I just get over cancer and try to take care of him, it's not helpful, so this is just like an extra added.
I understand, I understand. Okay, well, we will, uh, we will follow up with the road commissioner and make sure he follows up with you.
Okay, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Uh, next thing on the agenda, following up with Powder Spring Road driveway change request. So, did Tristan come out and look at everything? Did Dan come out and look at anything?
No, he'll pay his way. I was given a list of reasons that it couldn't be done, and I'd gone and answered all the questions why it could be done, so I think we're at the point where it could make a motion to get this thing taken care of.
I think Tristan and Dan didn't meet up there.
All right.
Tristan brought up, uh, the power company was one of the concerns, um, stream operation was a concern, a lot of landlords were concerned, and one mom's up is a concern.
Okay.
Going through the bylaws for good, going through the abutters for good, um, and the power company is fine with that as well.
I, I didn't get a report back from Tristan, Dan, or Tristan on this.
Tristan did say if there was, if you was, he would be available at this point in time if he was needed for vote or any input, if you want to call him.
Okay, I don't know if I wanna, he's only part of it, I mean, really, it comes down to the road commissioner who's not here, the zoning commissioner.
Which has been, which they've all been asked since June to show up at site meeting and refuse.
Okay.
We've got to a point where we need to, I've met all the criteria, all bylaws, everything is met.
What is the distance from the, a property line to the road?
There is the property line to the town road.
Different property line.
Oh, different property line, it doesn't fall into play. Um, Dan stated, yeah, 33206, but that's for newly constructed lots, this is an existing lot.
So what about when you're gonna come in here and turn here, how far does the road have to be away from someone else's property line is there?
It does not, it's zero.
So it can be as close?
It can, yeah. Yep, yep, that we did, Tristan and I did turn around and through the bylaws as well.
Harold, what would you like to do?
I mean, I've advanced on this.
No, I, I, I understand, um, but the people that need to answer the questions aren't here and didn't provide any answers, so...
That's their, that's their fault, they've been, it's warranted, they know what's going on, and they know, and they've been invited to meet for months, we can't just keep taming this because they don't want to do it, if it's a personal reason, I don't know, but there's a reason they're not showing up, and we can't just keep hiding because they don't want to. This is held back to sale for several months.
So you're trying to get drive-in right away, there's a...
There's no curb cut, there's no nothing, the only thing I'm asking for is to remove, to move, which is already crossing the town property, downhill, no, no more, no less conforming to the town property.
So the only, the only real difference is, is that instead of it cutting across, cutting across the corner of another property that it cuts from the road...
It wasn't to that, it was a common ownership property, all of it was, they deeded that property to the Cameron for the bridge construction, that's why that...
No, I'm talking about the, the abutting property.
So the abutting property, um, yeah, that's gonna allow them off from that, the abutters are not, you know, really open to allowing that as a right of way for the new owners. But they've had no trouble with moving it, I spoke to them verbally, and if they, they weren't coming up for a decision, but if they need to come up to review, they would come up next week. But we don't, at that time is when Dan mentioned that they were needed, or Tristan had mentioned they were needed for variance, but according to bylaw, that, according to that rule, we don't need them. He was stating this 20-foot way to stay off from a property, but that is for newly constructed lots, this is a pre-existing lot. No curb cuts are being changed, the only thing that's changed is the distance on the same parcel of land that you want, that the town owns.
So there, there'd be more driveway service on that?
Barely, barely, it's going downhill 20 feet.
Can you write it, draw it on here?
Where it would be going?
Sure. I don't have a time machine.
What's gonna take there?
Take this roll?
So, this is Bob's here, there's a telephone pole here and an ottoman pin, we have permission from the telephone company to be, and power company to be there, so we are going to turn the lights off, off of that. No curb cut change or anything, it's a load.
And this ditch that's here, you're...
Not touching, not touching, not changing any impervious to anything.
And stay as far away from the brook as you can?
I have to stay 50 feet from it or 65 feet.
At the, at the...
Left side, yeah.
So you're still, at the, the closest point?
Was all of 65 feet more.
From the...
Yep.
From the brook.
Yep.
So there was a right of way to that property, Shane, is that correct?
Well, yeah, cause it was in common ownership, and then they broke the lots up and in turn didn't pay attention that, to, until they had it surveyed by ottoman that it was.
So there's not technically, there's not technically easement through...
There is an easement for an owner, but I, it would be funny if, if transferred to the new owner, I believe, I'm not 100% sure on that.
No, so I'm talking about the abutting property.
The abutting property?
Yeah.
They already have their own right, they already have their own driveway through the house.
No, but where this driveway goes currently through that abutting property...
Yes.
Do they have an easement for the driveway as it is now?
Yes.
Okay.
But not transferable, to my knowledge is what the problem is.
Okay.
I don't know that for 100, I don't know that for a fact, but I'm assuming that's why they've hired me to move it down, I'm just making assumption.
Okay. Did they talk to the abutting property owner about buying that corner of the property?
They did, yeah, and they, they didn't have any, they didn't want to do it. And I think they, they've both talked back and forth about purchasing and never could come to terms, I just know the current owner now is, the lot's, it's solved as soon as we can get the right of way taken care of. My, where I'm at though is we've been seriously doing this since June, and nobody's willing to meet, Tristan's been doing his best and pulling his hair out and said, drop the gavel, let's get this over with.
Well, it's easy for him to say he's not to meet it.
Well, he also didn't say, don't be afraid to call if it turned into that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't have a report from the, from the zoning administrator, I, it's important information to have.
This was warranted tonight, right? In the joint? Yeah? If that, if he doesn't show, that's his problem.
Yeah, but I also don't wanna make a decision without taking into consideration every law regulation that needs to be considered.
If I just show up and there was something warranted, then you would make, whoa, he's not here, he refuses to help in this situation, we have a duty and free sub information here to vote on, if he wanted to be here, he would have.
There is walking access to this property though, right?
At this point in time?
Yeah.
Probably, I guess that's how that would be, I don't, no...
So it's not landlocked, you can't access it?
No, no, it's not landlocked, no.
Okay. Seems like a property dispute between two property owners that the Select Board's got dragged into, really.
What it feels like to me, and I, I think that's where, understanding all of the situations, and I can address that the zoning commission administrator is not here with the zoning administrator, but I still, as the town's expert on all of our bylaws and state regulations on zoning, I kinda have to have his input.
Yeah, it would be very nice if he would show, this was brought up last year, correct?
Uh, yes.
It's been brought up a lot, months of it.
I was also under the impression that Tristan had volunteered to coordinate that meeting, so...
He did, and he said that he didn't, he would refuse to come.
Tristan and Dan did go up?
They went up there themselves, but they were anxious for anybody else to be on site or have a meeting with anybody there.
I don't know, man, I just...
Personally, I want to table until I communicate to all these people that they need to be here and need to be part of this conversation, because I, I understand it delays, I understand it delays your process, but, you know, at the same time, you know, I, I don't have the, all of the information that I need to have to be able to make a...
What information would be needed?
I, I just need to understand what state, state regulations, what zoning bylaws, all of those things that are involved with moving this road, I mean, and it, it's not even, or this driveway, um, it's just...
It's currently on this parcel, not asking to be on the parcel, it's already on the parcel, your Donaldtown parcel.
Yep, but it would...
There are no curb cut changes, there's no environmental changes, I have, the, the only thing that Dan brought up was the 20 feet from the property line, which obviously is not needed, and then the other one was needed to be 25 feet from the telephone pole, and Steve Hart from Washington Electric said, no, that's not true, that it could be within two feet of it if we want to go right ahead and put it in. Everybody that I've spoke to, including Tristan, is 100% for, I just, I'm, it's just getting tiring for him to show.
Tristan's not here and he didn't...
I know Tristan's not here, not gonna be, but, he's not, it's, how is, how is it a problem when the person refuses to show or put in input?
No, I, I can take that back and have a conversation with, with Dan about that, I mean, I, again, I'm not gonna sit here and make a decision blind without understanding the damn thing except for looking at a map, you know what I mean? I, I hate, I don't wanna be, I don't need to be crass, but, you know, I hate being put in a position where I, where we have to look at and try to make a decision on something that we don't have the information for.
Two other people are supposed to look into.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to a shame, but it feels to me like two people can't get along and the only solution is the town has to give up land.
Hmm, no, land's already there.
They have to give up right of way across that.
Nope, you already get the right of way there, it's just moving it.
So if it's already there, then what do we talk about?
We're talking about taking the permission to move it downhill 20 feet.
Well, it's gonna stay there, go up to their property still, and then it's also gonna be a four problem.
No, it wouldn't be going to their property anymore, they already have their, they already have their own.
No, but, but the existing driveway, you're not even throwing up the road and stuff, you're gonna, what's there is gonna stay there, right? You're just gonna change...
The direction down, um, the, the abutter already has a driveway up above that we want to move.
No, I, I know, but, no, but I think what Carrie's saying is, is what's here is, is, I mean, you're not doing anything to alter the additional landscape on the abutters property.
No.
So that, that driveway will still, will still be there after you put in the new driveway.
Um, I guess it'd be a field entrance, yeah, yeah, but I'm... But I'm assuming that nine-one-one address doesn't go for their house, does it? It goes for Bob Taylor's property.
There should be. There's two meal boxes, so. There's one for Bob Taylor's and the upper one, yeah.
Yes. I just, I find it hard to believe that we can't go forward when everybody's been warranted and noticed, and there's been more than enough time to do it. All the information's here. It's not if you go wrong.
I understand that. I understand what you're saying, but.
I just find it hard to believe we can table it again with the information is here, and the person refuses to apply, to apply his information. Or me.
But I, and, and again, that could be addressed as a separate issue, when it, the issue-
That would be a separate issue.
This is a separate issue, yeah. And again, I, I-
It's on the agenda to be taken.
I'm right with, with Aaron. I'm, I'm supportive of, of trying to figure out what to do, but at the same time, I can't, I don't feel like I have all of the information necessary to make a proper decision, because I, I wasn't part of the meetings, I wasn't part of the site visit.
The last meeting, Dan-
Neither was I.
The last meeting, Dan and Tristan were gonna meet and come back to the board. That's where me and Zach left it, and now, and that was where, same thing you were here, Shane.
Yeah, I really wish he'd taken coming out and called Tristan, because he did, um, say that.
Tristan's yes vote right now isn't gonna change anything.
It's gonna give you information.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I think even then, like.
Tristan wanted to share information, he could've come to this meeting.
Yeah, or he could've emailed us that, and me knowing-
So can, so can the zoning minister.
Absolutely, hundred percent.
I understand.
That's why it should be omitted. A hundred percent, it should be omitted. If you're not gonna take in Tristan, then we can't take in his, correct?
Correct, well.
We're double legged and sword here.
Well, they, neither one of them is here, so it's not double legged anything. But, you know, I, I, again, I think the problem is, is I don't know, and, and I mean, I can spend some time and do some research before the next meeting, so I understand, I can go look at it, but I don't know what the regulations are that, that weren't, that need to be reviewed with, with regards to this. You know, it's, it's not a change to our easement or the right of way. It, it, it really comes down to, you know, do we, what, you know, again, it's, there's environmental impacts, there's zoning impacts, those are things that need to be understood. If we make a decision, we vote on this and make a decision now, and the next meeting, I get a letter from the state saying this is not allowed to happen, then we have to backtrack it, which in two weeks you'll have the work done anyway.
Could we do this then? Because so we don't blow ourselves out another month or so. Could we make a motion on if Tristan and Dan have our fine with decisions made because I've answered all their questions. As of last week, everybody's questions were answered and we're good to go for tonight. That, we make the motion that if Dan and Tristan say go ahead, we can call it a done deal, and so don't have to wait to ask for more.
I mean, our next meeting is in two weeks, so it wouldn't be, you know, but.
And so is in closing.
Uh, uh, yeah, I understand, you know.
Mr. Cameron, can I throw something in here?
Sure.
I'm, I'm listening to this whole conversation, uh, and trying to think, okay, how's this gonna work? Uh, is it possible to have a special board, select board meeting one night, just pick a night, and? Well, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
It could, uh-
Just subtle issue, because, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just-
It has, it has been months waiting on Dan to make a decision.
Okay.
Here we are.
I'm just, I'm surprised that-
Here we are again, and it's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's been months and it was only on the agenda at the last meeting, as a concern. So, I get it. I, I can address the, the zoning administrator, but, you know, what I'll do is call him and talk to him, I'll talk to Tristan, and we'll set another be, you know, we can set a special meeting as, as Wade indicated, if need be, to get it resolved, but, yeah, I mean, I-
Even, I think even if we went forward with it tonight, they're still gonna be, they're still gonna go through the town lawyer, write something out.
Agreed.
So, and usually that's a minute or two, getting that back from.
Just a couple, if you can get a hold of them. I, up to you, Aaron, I, I-
The two guys we appointed to deal with this aren't here.
Correct.
Um, if we can get something together by next week.
Okay.
I mean, I would be open to having a special meeting to resolve this, Shane.
Would, would you love to do it onsite? Something we've been asking for since June.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could.
Oh, great.
Wouldn't you think so? Special meeting, call it, whatever.
Well, we've kind of foregone the closing, he shut down the camera, or-
Other end of the term.
He had on, was onsite, we-
Yeah.
I know it's supposed to be illegal to do it onsite vote, but if you pre-voted it.
No, we can do an onsite vote as long as it's a warrant meeting and it's, it's on the agenda to vote on.
Got it, yeah.
So we can have a special meeting if, if that's what it needs to be, and it'll be on that one particular item, and we'll meet right there.
Perfect.
I'll, I'll reach out to both of them and we'll try to schedule something.
Yeah.
Okay?
I just, well, can we pick one, just because we've done this and picked ones? Um, can we just pick the day?
I don't know, Tristan's out of town.
I have, I have the annoyance that I have to come from Florida, and I have the annoyance that I have to come from Connecticut.
I mean, that's a first name. Yeah.
What's that?
It takes time.
Man, Wednesdays are open.
I don't, I might be traveling to North Carolina next Wednesday.
No disrespect, let's see, that's how, that's how it would go.
Yeah, well, my mother just had brain surgery tonight, so I gotta travel down to take care of her, so, you know, I-
I understand.
So, I mean, why don't we say next Tuesday? At, I'll find out what time works, but.
It's D eleven.
It's D eleven. At, I don't know, why don't we just start at six? Just over there?
Yeah. Start running out of daylight, you start at six, though.
I hope it won't be a whole lot of daylight.
Hopefully not.
Do we wanna say five then? Why don't we say five, and if we have to go later, we can go later?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that sound like an okay compromise for the time being?
That's exactly what I've been asking for since June.
Yeah.
My dad.
Yeah, so what? I'll put it out there, if Aaron and I will obviously need to be there, or we need a quorum to make the meeting work. So if Aaron and I, and I are both there, and if we can get the zoning administrator there, if not, I'll, I'll get his input and have it with me for the meeting, and/or do my own research on what needs to happen there, but we'll figure something out and get it.
Okay.
Okay?
Wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Okay. Next on the agenda, Fall Foliage Day follow-up. Um, I put this on here just, partially just to, to bring, I think, forth that this year's Fall Foliage Festival, including the Chicken Pie Supper, went a lot smoother than last year, which is a good thing. I, I will say that I think, uh, you know, Mark, Mark Crawford did a great job standing up, just to make sure traffic control is taken care of for the parade. I, I do think that something to consider in the future for, for planning purposes, and not to take away from the community club, because I know they do a lot of work for Fall Foliage, but there's a lot of pieces of Fall Foliage that they just, it goes on to the flyer and nobody really takes it from there, so. I, I think one of the things that I would like to try to do is, you know, establish a working group or committee that can help kind of put those things in place, uh, so things like, uh, at one o'clock, we were trying to figure out who was gonna start the parade, because we didn't, well, the fire department was on a call during the parade.
Didn't have a band, usually the band-
In town, right, right, right on stream. Um, usually we have the band, but they, they weren't there, so um, just, you know, having somebody that can help organize, a volunteer that can help organize, you know, the parade. Somebody that may be interested in helping to, to coordinate, um, you know, folks that are using town space or space along the roadway for fundraisers or, or craft sales or otherwise, so. Just, just a thought that I had, that, you know, I think as the community club has communicated, their, um, their only focus for the Fall Foliage Festival is the Chicken Pie Supper, which is, you know, perfectly fine. And the town has the permit for the parade and has the insurance for the parade, that, you know, maybe we should start, start helping to have a group, and kind of officially organize to, to help organize that, so. Just kind of my two cents, anyway. But that's all I really wanted to say about Fall Foliage Day.
That's all I have to say about that.
That's all I have to say about that. Uh, okay, anything else about Fall Foliage Day? How much money did the fire department auxiliary make?
I didn't make any money.
It says last night, it says it's over fifteen, over fourteen.
That's great, that's great.
Fifteen thirty, I think.
I, I, I was busy.
More than last year.
That's good, that's good. Okay. Next up, our, our two, our R1 insurance discussion. So I know, uh, that there were some questions and concerns brought up, um, and I know that, you know, Lisa, you, you had sent a letter for, for Wade, and Wade, you and I had a small conversation on Saturday, but wanted to open it up, um, and I think first what I wanna do, and I know the, the concern is, well, wanted to let Chief Johnson talk first.
I just wanted to apologize. I didn't mean to stick my nose in your guy's business about, I just listened to this guy going back and forth, I'm thinking, this is like a tennis game, you know? It ain't going nowhere, and I was like, okay, maybe there's an option here, but, uh, like I said, I didn't mean to stick my nose in your boy.
No, it's all right.
First off, I appreciate, uh, first of all, that it's just, it's a matter of information, uh, of the whole thing. Uh, appreciate Lisa sending me the information on how this is all laid out. And, of course, when we had the first issue with the insurance checks on the tanker, we had that call, it was in November, and I, I don't know when the check came, I think it was in December. And understanding that at the end of the year, everything goes into the general fund, I, I realize that, so. So my assumption is, understanding that, figured that, well, we get this R1 fixed before the end of the year, we get the insurance money going, you know, without realizing what the process is, to get it back, you know, and pay for the damage. And all of a sudden, now, I said, oh, it says, okay, it goes in general, it's already in the general fund, I, then they kind of took me back, I said, wait a minute, how's that work? So that, that kind of threw me off, and I wasn't, you know, I, I wasn't prepared, and I think, okay, how's this work? And, uh, with the other communications the way it was, and, yeah, I, and I, and I appreciate Lisa giving me the information. My, my concern is that they, at any time when that check came in, did that, did you, was it all brought to your select board's attention when that check came in? I'm just, I'm asking questions, because these are some of the questions that were asked me, so.
Yeah, so, so in general, with revenues, we aren't notified about updates to the revenue coming in the door. It's all part of, it, it's all part of the audit every year, so that's all reviewed as part of the auditing process. And so, you know, with insurance claims or any revenue, same thing with, you know, uh, fines or tickets or other stuff, you know, we, we don't generally, I don't generally look at or review all of those revenues.
That's, that's one of the questions. Uh, the other one is, we had, we had briefly discussed it, I had a question with you, we were talking, yes, uh, for clarification, because this is one of the other questions that came up by one of the firefighters, is, is, okay, uh, if that's gonna be the case, then what happens if, you know, God forbid, if we had a tanker that had a, was totaled out, you know, you're three hundred thousand dollars out, uh, does that go through the same process, or? Or is there a separate, or how, how does the select board handle that?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think the way, and Lisa can maybe speak to some of this too, but all of those revenues go into the general fund, I mean, that's any revenue that goes in there. We can allocate from there. So if we've got, you know, a total, a total loss of a vehicle, um, and you get three hundred thousand dollars in, into an account that is a revenue from an insurance, obviously, you're gonna buy the tanker that you need.
Yeah.
You know, and then from there, we allocate the funds. So that, that's my understanding of it. Lisa, does that sound accurate?
Yeah, I mean, general fund is where fire department money is, so it goes into general, there's no other place to put it.
Yeah.
And it's goes into general fund, and then what you're fixing is an expense to what you're fixing, which in this case, it's R1.
Yeah, so it's a-
So there's no other way.
Yeah, yeah, so, and it's a debit, right? So think of it in credit and debit forms, you know, we're, we're debiting to pay for what needs to be paid for, for repairs, um, and then we're basically crediting the revenue back to the general fund to balance it out.
And I can note in the town report, or the chief can write in his report, and in the town report, that the we went over budget in that line due to an accident in an insurance check.
Yep, and-
He has the amounts, he could certainly write that in his report, or I can write it next to the budget line.
Exactly. We can indicate, I think is the big thing, like, if there's an anomaly in spending, obviously, you know, we, we need to be able to, and a team.
That's one of the things you got going in your favor, chief, is there's a reason why. Yeah, if somebody asks you.
I know that.
Yeah, why is this like this? There's a good reason why.
It's the same thing with revenue, so it, when you're looking at the town report, and there's a giant revenue that was-
It's a fire department revenue.
It'll say there, so we can, we can, we can, you know, we can inform people, what's kind of, and, and be able to talk to it. So what I will say is, is I think one of those complications with, with budgeting in general is going to be improved this year, which is we're not gonna have, uh, an Australian ballot town meeting, so we'll actually be able to, if somebody stands up in the meeting and goes, hey, what's this about? We can actually go, here you go, this is, this explains it, so you understand. Because it's gonna be a giant expense for this year, but next year it's not gonna be there, right? Because hopefully it's not gonna be there, right?
Well, I just want, said, I'm not doing anything wrong. He spoke to the VLCT attorneys, and they said it is town money, and the select board can choose what to do. And I feel like he was thinking I was not doing, um, the accounting and depositing that money in correctly. It's made out to the town of fraud.
Yeah.
It goes in general fund.
Correct.
And I'm not doing it wrong.
Okay. And I think the big thing is, just, again, we need to be able to account, like anything, when the revenue comes in, we account for the revenue. We know where, you know, what, what it goes against in the budget, and we understand that, and just have to communicate it that way.
I don't know as though you could enter it anywhere else, could you?
Yeah.
And general fund is gonna have the expense fixing it, so the general fund's gonna get the money, to have the money to either fix it.
Yep.
The only other question I've left is, uh, I guess it comes to these, I'm doing the budget, so, uh, which is, be interesting, when you guys figure out when you're gonna do your budget thing, so. Is, uh, something like this, because it's in the back of my mind, when I do up the, is there gonna be, uh, I, I'll say this openly, because it depends on who's on the board, and I, I, that's kind of gonna be, it's kind of a general question, is, how, is, uh, something like that, how, is that gonna affect when it comes to the time when we go to the budget, when they look at the budget for the next year and say, well, how, you know, you wanna budget this amount of money while you went over in this budget, you know, you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying, I know it is-
So, a, as you know, when we look at the budget, we're looking at, we're looking at previous year budget, we're looking at, I think, the year before too, budget, and then we're looking at our actuals. So we can see, and, and again, it's like any line item, when I look through and review that budget, and I look at, hey, this line in the actual is way over, and I know that it's for, you know, for R1 repair, it's gonna show.
She's gonna remember what it is.
Yeah, yeah, and so we can make that annotation and, and understand that, that that's part of the, part of the budgeting process, is, is not just, you know, seeing what we spent for the year and going, well, you didn't spend, and we, and we looked at some of those, right? So if, if our budget to actual, um, appears that we're not using a significant amount of a budget line, we should have a conversation around what that means. Now, you know, right, so some budget lines, I mean, it's like fuel, right? Our budget lines for fuel are probably gonna be over budget this year, because we're, you know, so we look at that, we can see those anomalies, and we, we then, as a board, can talk about, you know, what, what makes sense fiscally on the budget moving forward. Yes, Lisa?
And when the fire department produces their budget, they could actually note it as an extra reminder, remember, we had an accident, and this is an insurance check claim, that's why we went over. So when they present their budget on budget day, they can note it as well, so it's not forgotten.
Correct, correct.
Budget day might be a little closer this year than it has been years past, so.
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't got the insurance on fixed yet either, it's halfway there, so it's gotta go back on the front line.
Again.
It's got, you know, the Edward Parks, and it's just, I don't, they will clean up whatever's left in that, uh, that whole thing. It's like, it was ten grand in it, there won't be ten grand in it, it happens.
Yep.
I mean, that's- I mean, that's...
I mean, that's, you get a 21-year-old vehicle, you know, it's showing wear, so.
Gotcha. Okay. Was that clear up? Kind of the understanding of the situation?
Yeah, sure, that way, if somebody asks me a question, I can tell, this is what it is.
Yep, and I think the big thing is, is, you know, we're following all of the correct policies, we're doing everything the correct way, Lisa's is following what we've got, and, you know, again, that's part of the reason why we have an auditing process, is to make sure that these are followed. And not that we don't trust that Lisa's doing the right thing, but, you know, I think Lisa's always doing the right thing as treasurer, but I think it's more of, you know, auditing to make sure that there wasn't a mistake that happened, or that we're allocating the funds correctly, and we're putting the funds in the right place for revenues when they come in, even if it's for an insurance claim. So, okay? All right. Anything else on that? I think we're good. Which brings us to the next point on the agenda, budget planning date. I think we had initially talked about the 19th of November, which Tristan is unable to attend.
Right, so he's available October 29th, it's a Saturday, so.
You said that would work for you?
Yeah, I thought that could work.
I can, I can make that work. Yeah. My biggest question is, you know, it's the 5th now, are we giving our, are we giving all the departments?
Well, I've given department heads up, a heads up, and then tomorrow, we decide, I was going to send them the agenda and follow-up. I mean, you really want the budgets to be even or under, so it shouldn't...
Shouldn't be challenging.
Shouldn't be too difficult, but it is, it's a process, I get it, so, I just want to confirm the date, so we can move forward.
All right, so, I mean, October 29th is the date, and we'll start at 8:00 AM, right?
Yeah.
7:30 if you want, coffee, nuts. I'll bring coffee, nuts.
It's like 8:00 AM, 1:30, but it feels like 8:00 AM to 9:30.
Okay, cool. So, change to October 29th.
Could I have a quick question to ask Lisa? Is on that, on the, the endurable, hold on, let's see if I get this right, durable equipment, is that what it is? I call it capital, but it's durable.
It preserves durable equipment.
When, is it every year that the money goes into that?
It's just the first time it happened this year.
Okay, no, I'm just wondering what the date is, when that goes in?
It just went in last week when I started collecting tax money.
Yeah, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep my thing updated, and I'm thinking, I know the money that goes in there, but I don't know when it is, so, I don't want to update it, and then have to go back and do it again.
Right.
Okay.
It's after we start collecting tax money that the reserves are funded.
All right, so I'll play it out on that.
I mean, you've already spent a lot, so it's going out.
Yeah, it's going out, because it'd be going out again too, because I got to turn it up here again.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, now we can get on to department updates. Any KCTU D cabinet easement updates? I'm just keeping that on there, because I know they, but it sounds like, from the email chains from a couple of weeks ago, that they're looking at somewhere other than town properties to put that on?
Yeah, I ran into a lady, and she sat down about solar panels here, General Solar Panels, I think might be a spot.
Okay. We'll still, I mean, we'll still end up with a zoning permit from them, anybody to do the work, so, okay. Infrastructure project, I want to keep it infrastructure project, because that's a little easier to say than the official name that we came up with for the FDA. I've not heard from, or gotten hold of Gavin, I'm going to check my email again tonight when I get home, but there's two questions when we met, we met since the last meeting, so we should probably update on the meeting. The biggest, the biggest toll gate we have to get over right now is the archaeological assessment and the easements. So, one of the questions that came up from Sean, who's our direct contact for the project, is, is, you know, have we established how wide the road is, and does that mean we have to have easements? I think the answer to that is, is we, I don't think, I don't think Gavin answered that question, but if he did, I think it was that, it was not three rod, if it's three rod, then, but he said even then, Sean and Nate and I walked the Lock Mill Street, and that we're going to have to figure out easements, especially for the consolidated communications lot, you know, even just a construction easement to go under the road to, or under their lawn area to connect the lines. But the archaeological is going to be down towards the river, they're trying to decide, and what Nate's hoping to do is, depending on what the archaeological folks say, is to transition that either further down the road, close, down around the curve of Mill Street, to find a spot that would be less of an issue with running, you know, the culvert under the ground. So, you know, they, I think we're still waiting to hear back as to whether they want to come down and do, you know, test digs or anything, but that is a potential too. So, am I missing anything, Lisa?
No, I just, I'm disappointed that Gavin hasn't gotten back to, I mean, this has been going, they came in search, and man.
Well, and not just that, but, I mean, we emailed them in July, I re, I re emailed everybody prior to that meeting to try to get ahold of Nate, and I don't know that I got a response then either.
It just seems like, when we were in the meeting, they kept coming back to, well, we got to know about the width of the road, and we got to know about the easements, and it's...
I thought it was left that they were just doing the easements.
That's where we, that's what I, I think we had gotten to the point of, we need to get easements set up for the impacted properties in general.
Move forward with that.
Yeah, even though it's not in, even though it may or may not be in the, we communicated that to Sean at the meeting, was that we thought that it was just, we needed to get the easements and get it done with, and then move on. So, that's kind of where we are with that. Still, I think if we're able to get that, or, I think, I don't know that Sean said this, but it sounds like we're still kind of on track for trying to put this out the bid in the winter, so that's a good thing, but we, it really is contingent upon making sure that by the time we're ready to start, you know, breaking ground, that we've got all of that other stuff figured out. And Nate was, Nate is cautiously optimistic that the archaeological survey that needs to be done, it's not going to be very invasive, that he can have a meeting with them here, and it'll get taken care of, and not have to do test holes. If it, if it does get to that point, it could push it back a year, just, just because of their schedule. So. I'll try Gavin, try Gavin again. Or, I think I've got the email of the other guy.
I asked him the other day, he called, and he said, Gavin, you didn't know anything? Gavin was supposed to be doing it.
Okay. Okay, so that's that. Highway, anything from the highway?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either. Okay. So, nothing from the highway. Okay. Treasurer?
Okay, so, let's see. I have the final audit for Zach and I to sign, and then I will have copies for the select, once we send that back, then they'll send us copies of the final audit. And the other hitch with this audit is, they are not moving forward with our contract. They are not doing municipal accounting audits anymore.
What's the name of the company? I can't remember.
Father Gil Segal and Valley. They, because of the training that is required for them to obtain municipal accounting, is costly, and they're short-staffed, and so they're going to give it up. So, I have to write out, to put it up for bid, and she is suggesting, she has a formal letter here for you, suggesting doing it sooner than later, so we can get on their books for next year.
They didn't have any recommendations?
So, that was disappointing that that's happening.
Well, especially because it was, I mean, we were pretty excited about getting these folks to do the audits.
So, so we can move forward with that, if you want.
Yeah, I think, let's move, let's, if we need to, let's get that on the agenda, get it out the bid, as soon as we can.
I'll write it up for the next meeting.
Okay.
So, I think I also said, for updating policies, I'm not going to be able to do that this time of year.
Okay, that's fine.
So, we're going to do it after, if it's okay with you, unless Aaron, you want to take on some, I...
I think we got kind of, no, I looked over the list before I got here, again, I mean, I think, let's plan on hopefully doing it in April, is what we usually do.
I appreciate it, it's just too busy to do it now. I also want to let you know that I sent out the appointment letter for the new library trustee to be appointed, Donna Russo Savage, and she returned it and accepted it.
Great, that's usually a bad thing, to return that, oh no.
She did, yeah. Also wanted to just touch on that Carrie and I had gone to a two-day conference down in Fairleigh, and we had many different seminars and roundtables, and it was pretty good, all of them, I mean, I think we each attended six topics and conferences, and then sitting around, having lunch with the different town clerks and treasurers is very beneficial, you share a lot of information. So, in one of my conferences was, was like security in banking, and we can talk about this a little bit more in Budget Day, but Community Bank offers this product, it's called Positive Pay for ACH checks, and it secures you, like, an example was given, somebody new started in an office, she got an email from their town manager saying, please transfer $100,000 to so-and-so and so-and-so, here's their info, and she did it. And, and being new, she didn't check, and with this Positive Pay feature, any ACH would have to be approved by the manager or the treasurer, or whoever's doing the original purchase, transfer. So, it kind of scared me, their scare, you know, it was really, because we've all gotten those emails.
Yeah, I get emails from Zach every so often, it's like, that's my number of important.
I've had those before.
So, it does cost, it's like $35 a month, but she thought she could do better, she came to the office, Community Bank rep came to the office, thought she could do something better for price, and we could try it out for six months and see, because I would have, it would be extra work for me to, I'd have to approve every transaction that would happen, where I now send a batch and it goes, you know, so, something to think about.
Okay.
And also, we might be looking at, I got, TD has some better interest rates for that surplus money market we have, so a three-month term is 1.5%, and it goes up to 1.85, depending on the term, six-month, nine-month. So, we might want to consider changing that. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, I think...
The difference is it would have to stay in it for a term.
For the term, yeah, what's, what is it?
Right, three months, six months, and nine months.
Yeah, what's, what's it at now?
It's a money market, so it's not, I don't have the rate now, but it's very low.
It just sits there, and it's available in everyone.
Right, just make it a little bit of money, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but not much.
So, something to think about.
Okay.
And, working on, they only give me like five days VLCT for passive renewal, I got to process it tomorrow, that is like looking at all the values of the own town property, so I'll have to get that done. Oh, we had a collector delinquent tax bank account in Wells River, was there when the previous delinquent tax collector was here, and it had 200 bucks in it, and we've never used it, even when we had a tax sale, we opened up escrow accounts in their name, so this, these funds...
It was the money that she collected, because she wasn't in the office, and she would just deposit the chunks in there, and then write Lisa a check from that bank account, so ever since she got done, it's just sat there.
Sat there.
So, we closed it.
Okay, good.
I mean, there's no need of having it.
So, it's $100 for you, $100 for me, is that what we're...
Since Tristan's not here.
Since...
Town property mowing contract, this was Ben's last year, so that needs to go out to bid, and he asked if we could go out for a five-year term, we did a three-year term, so think about that, and we should do that at some point. I think that's it for treasurer. Thank you.
So, I take it, he wants to, he wants to bid on the...
Yes, yes, he does.
And he wants, he wants for sure a five-year...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that we start prepping that now, because it's for the next year.
Right.
That we should, we should, I would almost recommend that we put it out the bid as soon as we can, so that we can make sure that that's included in the budget for next year.
Right.
So, okay.
Okay, that's it.
That's it? Not too much there. All right, Carrie, town treasurer, or town clerk, not the town treasurer.
So, the ballots have been mailed out by the state, so hopefully everyone got theirs, if not, they can let me know. A few have come back with some, I don't know what, the mailing house somehow has changed some addresses, so, heard from other clerks around the state, so it's not, it's not a perfect system, for sure, but, other than that, that's really all I have. We did the training, Lisa talked about it.
Yeah.
No complaints from dogs lately?
Oh, that's good. Got a new constable in town, cranking down on it.
Yeah, people have come in and licensed ever since we sent out the letter, so that's helped.
That's good.
We're not 20 people in.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Question about the ballots, do you have to return the ballots, or destroy them, or, if you're going to come in and vote?
Don't, just bring your ballot and vote with that ballot, they only gave the towns a certain amount of extra ballots.
Gotcha.
So, just in case, I mean, if you lost it, we already have enough, but, you're going to have to sign an affidavit saying that...
You lost it.
You lost it, and you didn't vote it somewhere.
Gotcha. Okay.
But we'll have some there.
So, it's going to be a busy couple of weeks.
So, you're supposed to bring your ballot in, the towns got 50 extra ballots, but the ones that you got in the mail...
Everybody got mailed, if you still have a person, just, just bring just the ballot.
Yeah, neither did I, I don't even know if I still have them. I'm not going to vote by mail.
We'll wait, we're going to dig that up, we're just like...
Yeah. We've probably had returned 40 ballots so far.
Okay. All right. Anything else, that's it?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Assistant Assessor, Dorothy.
Nothing exciting this visit, they're beautiful. I did want to follow up on my parking sign. We talked about an August third meeting, and I don't see a sign out there for me. They were going to do something to make a spot where I could park.
Yeah.
I will follow...
We talked to Harold, and he was trying to get one order, but I, I lost it.
I made one.
I saw that.
Got that put up, tried to help, but, you know, it's not going to last very long, but I don't know what's happening.
Okay, I mean, it seems as though sometime recently, Harold said that they were backed up at the sign-making shop, he'd tried to order stuff before, not surprisingly, everybody's backed up, but, I don't, yeah.
I mean, I think you can get a metal one at Lowe's or Walmart, and you put it on a better post than what I had.
Okay. Okay, Dorothy, I'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
We're good.
All right, thank you. Fire it fast.
Engine's gonna go back as a state, it's gonna go back, great lineup for, it's amazing how they can, they have to order parts and you know how long that's gonna take, so, uh, it's just, I'm waiting for the call, so send it back down. Uh, it is getting older and I got, trying to get established doing some, with Wells River, we usually do our annual pump testing together and usually it's about this weekend, but I haven't heard nothing. So I gotta make contact with them about that, try to keep up with that. Everything is, the budget's kind of, uh, we're staying within the lines of the budget, uh, pretty much in some areas. We got, uh, two, two firefighters going to level ones, actually tonight, orientation tonight in Danville. So we'll see how that goes. And we had one, one of our firefighters has stepped down, he's off our department. He's, and he was, he did belong to Wells River as well and he stepped out of that. So he's got, he's trying to take some time off for family and stuff and so. That cuts on numbers, that cut on numbers, so, especially with, uh, level one, level two qualifications, so.
How old, how old do you have to be to be on the fire department?
Do you want to join?
I'm just asking, I'm not.
I think you, we'll take if you get a pulse. You can't, you can't, you can't go inside, but you can't do like firefighting activities, like fire scene activities unless you're eighteen. So. But as far as junior firefighters or, you know, young teens or whatnot would be, be welcomed at the station during meetings and whatnot, so.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Thank you, wait. Constable, I didn't hear anything from Mark other than he did a fantastic job coordinating with the two sheriff's deputies that came for the parade. Parade went off without a hitch, so that's good.
Two sheriff's deputies and the two sheriff's candidates that were there too.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, I talked to the one sheriff and said that we were gonna ask for the two to do three of two and then Mark. Was it you that?
I did, yeah, I did mine or no?
Yeah, we do the rest, so he was all set and I talked to Mark and told Mark we're gonna look for them when they got there, so. It all went pretty well.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Okay, and I did, I did mention to, uh, James, when I saw that we would probably be reaching out. I'm, I'm gonna reach out to him just on next year's contract.
Yeah.
So that we have that in advance of the Budget Days to talk about what that looks like. So, okay. All right, library?
Not much to report other than I think it was, it was really nice to have lots of people out and about on Saturday. The community art showcase is up for the whole month, so it would be really awesome to see people come in and check out the talent and creativity of fellow Brown residents and Brown area citizens. And then I'm working on a Halloween ice cream social, spooky ice cream social. That'll be on Monday, the thirty-first.
All right. Awesome, well, thank you. And I'll, I'll be, you said ice cream, I'll be there.
No, you don't, you can be after the tree.
Be there after, I don't know. Chalk my costume, dad costume, that's it, yeah. Um, all right, zoning administrator, nothing from Dan, health officer, nothing new there. Maintenance, you, Lisa mentioned the town property mowing bid. We should definitely, I think, move forward with putting it out the bid.
Okay.
So.
I can work on what the ad was that we used last time and let you guys look at it next time.
Yeah.
Couple of things under maintenance is Aiken Plumbing and Heating is coming on November twenty-ninth to service the community building and the fire department's heating systems.
Is he doing the highway department at the same time or?
No, Harold said he didn't need it because he bought that new furnace last year. So if you feel differently, then let me know. I don't know if I can squeeze that into Aiken or not, but Harold didn't think so.
Uh, it's Harold's furnace, it usually should have him.
Every year, right? All right, I'll ask Harold.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good to have somebody, especially going into the heating season, have Garrett look at it, replace a nozzle or anything that he needs to, a oil filter or that.
Is that, is there using waste oil?
No.
It's, no.
I don't think they generate enough.
No, no, they don't, I, I just, yeah.
Chimney savers came and serviced the chimney, so all went good. They hadn't come for a few years, so they did see a few problems. And I'll bring this to Budget Day of a quote of work that should be done next year. It's nine hundred ninety dollars and I'll let you guys all review it either now or Budget Day.
Is it there? Can we use the? Do we have reserve funds available now?
Community building reserve.
Community building.
Like improvements, I don't know.
There's some first and heat repairs and stuff too, regular budget.
Yeah. I'm just thinking as.
We use plumbing and water and.
Can he even come this year or?
I don't know, first you need, you know, about seven hundred of a thousand, so.
Yeah.
It wouldn't quite cover it. So you can let me know, I can ask if they can, um, do it in twenty twenty-three, but I don't think we have the money, so.
Gotcha.
And, um, community building, power washing, it didn't happen. And I had a heck of a time getting gentleman's W nine. He finally sent me the contract, but he wouldn't send me the W nine, so he was supposed to show up on the twenty-eighth. He didn't show up, so I called and canceled. So that's not happening, so that might be something to think about for next year. So Tim Corry, he's working, he's got everything coordinated to work on the park's lights this fall. And the only other question I had was about cemetery. Tom Gannon is going to be sending an invoice, maybe you could check.
I can.
I have emailed him, but.
Yeah.
Because he's the one that I usually write a check to this time of year.
Yep, for cemetery cleaning.
Cemetery work on the stone, so that was, that was all I had.
Okay. All right. IT, anything for IT?
No, Gary, um, we got the new printer from my office and, um, he is very, very, very busy. And I met him down here at six-thirty the other night to have him show me how to use it because it's a little bit different. I got the gist, but there was a couple of folders that I didn't know I could do scan to, so that was good.
Okay.
So it's, it's beautiful, works very efficiently.
And, and does it? Has enough paper.
Right.
All to get everything done, right? Okay, planning commission, anything for the planning commission?
They have zoning bylaws and they have a meeting on that.
They did have that meeting.
They have one for the end of the, towards the end of the month.
And they made one scheduled now for October twenty-fifth.
That's right, yeah.
They had the public meeting already, is that? Such a good stuff.
I'm just looking for you.
Mark, did you go zoning board adjustment? Doesn't matter, we just gotta put up with whatever they, they come up with, right?
It was supposed to be something that we were, was put in front of us and then nothing happened. I was stunned that nothing happened. Nothing put in front of me, no.
You seemed stunned.
Stunned.
He was stunned then.
No, there's nothing.
All right. Okay, open the public another business, I know Mark you had.
You already did.
Okay, there you go.
Well, I, I just stayed for a sit, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, I appreciate it.
But I, I have a permit here for a driveway to put some stuff underneath my road, but you guys are so efficient. Carrie gave it to me as I walked in.
Yeah, there you go.
This is, that's what they did when we walked in the office, they put it right in our hands and said, sign next for Mark Leicher, it needs to be done.
I, I appreciate it, thank you.
I had this thing, I think I gave to you guys.
Yep, 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 I just had it.
The two culverts under Italy Road.
Isn't this the County Natural Resources, okay.
We've had this discussion once already.
Yeah, so I guess it got delayed, but she was just updating us and she can come again and speak about it. But it looks like not till mid twenty twenty-three that they'll start. No, no cost to the town. The culvert is blocking the fish from doing their thing, so.
So no, no action on our part, really, I think, right? Other than they're rescheduling for next year. Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm always in favor of taking care of waterways and whatnot in town. I mean, we're the head of the Wells River, so, and everything that we send down the river goes to the Connecticut, goes down in the ocean, so if we take care of our end of it, it's on everybody else afterwards, so.
It's very true. Very true. So yeah, okay, great, I think we're definitely, I'm in support of it as well, what Aaron said. Other, open the public and other business, that's good. Um, I want to make a statement. Oh boy. I know that there has been some questions as to whether I'm planning on running for reelection for select board in March and I want to officially announce that I will be running and seeking reelection. So I just wanted to communicate that officially so that everybody knew that that's the case, so that there wasn't any questions in the public's eyes as to whether I was running or not. So I think with some of the great work we're doing and especially with the infrastructure project we've got going on, I want to see that through to the end at least and, um, you know, feel like I'm doing a pretty good job to help the town and, and, you know, help us maneuver some pretty tricky times through the pandemic and now the fallout of the pandemic and, you know, kind of the ensuing financial crisis and would like to continue to volunteer my services to help with that.
Now it's just a matter of going around kissing hands and shaking babies, right?
Something like that. Something like that. Lisa, do we want to talk about insurance or is this just?
No, I'm just giving you the information.
Gotcha, perfect. Okay. Anything else for open to the public and other business? Once, twice, all right. Cool. Set the agenda for next meeting, the nineteenth. Uh, I think, do we want to do another follow-up on the?
Rachel Smith?
Rachel Smith.
We may, unless it's resolved before then, but.
All right.
You're gonna already resolve the powder spraying issue, right?
Oh, yeah, hopefully.
So that needs an agenda for ten eleven, so we're gonna have to get that going pretty quickly because that's Tuesday.
Geez, I can put it up on Friday anyway. Saturday, do it on Saturday. Yeah, I'll, I'll work on that, that should be a pretty easy agenda. What's the address? I didn't have.
Address of what?
Where this is taking place.
I can email you that tomorrow.
Okay, it, I, other than I know it's on powder spring road. I don't think we've ever talked about the actual address, but, okay. And I'll see what I can do to get some info, gather research and some info on that personally.
Yeah, reach out to Dan. You're gonna try to get Dan to show up, be there, right?
Hopefully, or at least have a conversation with me.
Yeah, send a report.
I'll talk to him and see if I can link up.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you, Dorothy. Uh, okay, I'm trying to think of what else we got on here that, I think. I think that's really it, I don't think there's anything else that we need to really follow up on.
We should entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, Gavin.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.